Practicing artist before I became a librarian, so. I still carry some of that with me.
We're a town of modest size, but we, our library serves as a senior center, teen center, children's center, community center. We have, we're all those things rolled into one, so it's.
That's what I totally think, feel it strongly that that's what libraries really should be. Cause in a lot of towns, that it's even, I mean, really small towns, that's the only place we have.
Exactly.
And everybody grows from that experience of mixing up your community. You know, instead of having, you know, the childcare or the, you know, the children's center and the senior center, there's no, I mean, people benefit from being with each other, so makes all the sense in the world to put them all together.
So my only concern, I love your resume and I loved all the things that you said on there, but in terms of the job length of time, just was curious as to, you know, it was like the Fuller Library was just over a year, a little over a year.
Right.
And the one year, the Wilton Public Library was about six months.
Right.
So I was just curious as.
Good question. So I worked at the, I started working at the Davis Public Library in Stoddard and I sort of reinvigorated it. Then I decided I loved it so much, I was gonna get my master's degree. So then at first I thought, well, okay, I can't be the director and do my masters. I just wanna really like focus on that. Then after that, I realized, well, I really need to be working in libraries. So like to make the connection between what I'm studying. And so the Fuller Library was right up the street and they wanted a very part-time technical services librarian. So I did cataloging and stuff like that. And, you know, it was funny, cause in the interview, I said, you know, I'm getting a master's degree. I'm not gonna stay here very long, right? You know, and they were like, oh yeah, we understand, that's fine. And they were completely supportive. And they actually found me the job in Wilton. They knew that there was somebody and it was a thirty hour a week job. And I was only working like twelve or fifteen maybe sometimes at Fuller. So I did that and it was really kind of far away from where I lived. And then another friend of mine said, you know, they need a children's librarian at the Antrim Elementary School. And working in schools is really awesome, da-da-da-da. So I applied for that job and I got it. So that's why there's all that kind of shifting. And now I'm sort of feeling like, well, my job in the elementary schools is really a very unique sort of job. I work in, I actually manage about seven little elementary school libraries and I teach in five of them. And the scheduling is just, and I just don't feel like it's very effective. I don't feel like I can really do the job that I want to do. So that's why I'm thinking, you know, maybe I should go back and be able to really make something out of a public library. Be fun.
Well, certainly, I mean, your skills, you certainly can, you're well-rounded.
Yeah, I do think I'm pretty well-rounded, actually.
That are listed here. It certainly looks like there's an awful lot of, you know, I mean, you have to be a one, one-person show a lot of times
Yeah.
in a small library like we are, and it certainly looks like you've done
Yeah.
most of that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Already.
Yeah. And, yeah, and I mean, I have friends in New Hampshire who all are directors or working in small libraries. And yeah, it's kind of like you do, you have to do everything.
Well, and you did at Davis, right?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, that was really, that was such a satisfying experience. Because we really just started from nothing, really. I mean, the library for the past twenty years had been open like four hours a week or something like that. And they really wanted to change it. And I volunteered at town meeting to just go and clean it and whatever. And then I just got really invested in it and all these other people started working with me. And so then they said, well, we wanna hire you. And I was like, well, okay. So I did that and I just loved it. It was great.
And it looks like you have experience in grant writing.
Yes, I do have some.
Excellent.
Not afraid.
Technology.
Yep, I do a lot of tech work at the schools.
What would you, in looking at sort of your management style or working with faculty, what are some strengths or what are some things that you like to do or you feel are important?
In terms of like the way I manage things?
Yes.
I usually try to break things down into like manageable, like we have a big plan and you sort of break that down a little more, a little more, until you get into like, okay, these are the things that we can actually accomplish. And I don't really like to micromanage people. That's why working in public libraries, cause you're working with people who get it, like get the importance of libraries, right? And they wanna do it and not like you're pulling their teeth. So you say, okay, so like let's, I think we could accomplish this. And so this is your part. And then we just check in probably every week, you know, at least for the beginning time. So I try to like, I think it always works better when you have everybody invested in something, right? So you have an idea about how you wanna serve the public better. Or you wanna change the children's room and, or, you know, what are we gonna do this summer for summer reading program, right? So you put a bunch of heads together and you come up with some ideas. And then you, then you sort of have to narrow down like, well, what are these ideas can we actually do? So it's all like pretty collaborative, I would say. And then just checking in and being able to support each other, right? Because there's always some glitch that's going to happen.
So do you find a lot of importance in staff meetings, regular staff meetings?
Yeah, I do. I think it's important for every, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, even if it's just ten minutes, you know? And to see if there's any concerns or, or, you know, what's just what's going on with everybody. Because you can come in and then everybody gets all busy and you don't even know maybe what's happening. You know, with the children's room or, or something or another. Hi.
Sorry?
It's okay.
Tag, I meant.
Anyway, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. That's great. Thank you.
State aid is something that is not available in New Hampshire, but it is in Massachusetts and we depend on it
Yes.
a lot. And it requires a five-year strategic plan.
Exactly.
Do for a five-year strategic plan in two thousand and fifteen. But there'd be a model to follow.
Right.
Are you familiar with?
Yes, I am, actually. I studied with Shelley Kazada, who was one of the
Oh, yes.
library trust commissioners. And I took a management class from her and I also took this great class about serving the underserved or something like that. And she was great, so.
She is. She's fantastic.
And I remember talking to her about this and, and the real need for strategic planning, which I thought was a great thing.
She walks you through every step of it. She's excellent.
She's amazing. Yeah.
I was very impressed. I was very impressed with your resume and, you know, from a personnel perspective, it looks like you have experience in terms of dealing with various personnel and that kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know. I kinda just like people, so the weirder they are, it's fine.
How come it's like that?
I don't know, you know, it's, people are just people and. So working in a place where you're public, where you'd ever know who's gonna walk in the door is always kind of exciting. You know, and it's, I don't know. I remember actually being in library school and they were saying how you should never ask a patron if they like that book they read or whatever, you know, because of privacy issues. I was like, well, I don't know. I mean, I understand that, but on the other hand, it's like, how are you gonna help them find another book? Or, I don't know.
This is buying into their lives.
Yeah, right. Not the same, but anyway. So I'm sensitive to those kind of issues, but on the other hand, it's a community place and we share. I mean, I'm not like you're gonna interrogate someone, but.
Well, the one thing we're very strong in is our adult programs.
We have excellent programs.
Books together, excellent, excellent programs.
Yeah, I've read about them online.
Oh, that's great.
You know, yeah.
She does a wonderful job.
And some, you have book groups and things, right? That's great.
Do you feel comfortable doing an adult book group?
Yeah, sure.
Excellent.
Yes.
We do have a Wednesday night book group that we'll be happy to have someone again.
Yeah.
Diana will be very happy to get back to, to being adult services and outreach and outreach.
So that's what you like, you do the adult services and outreach?
Yes.
To most, to the whole community or to mostly the adult community?
Mostly the adult community.
Community, okay, good.
But she's been, she's been kind of overseeing everything at this stage of the game.
Right.
She's ready to go back.
But she's still breathing, so.
Still breathing. Still smiling.
A little bit, right?
We don't know if it's a smile or a grimace, but we accept it as a smile.
Do you have questions?
So I'm a patron volunteer and she's been partying and helping to get a friends group off the ground.
Oh, great.
We've had one in the past and we, it kind of waned and now we're looking to revive it. So I see that you at the Davis Library have some experience with that.
Yeah.
So that would be perfect. We definitely have some interesting members of the community. It's just a matter of getting that organized. And so, you know, any ideas or hope that you could bring to that?
Sure. I mean, I think friends groups are really important for libraries, for fundraising, but for also, I mean, just providing, you know, I, when I was at the Wilton Library, the friends were very active there. It was great. Cause they would come in, they'd read stories, you know, like they'd bring their grandchildren and then they'd read the, and then other kids. And I don't know, it's just like a very, you have a, a whole other sort of diverse pool of people that come in and really care about the library and do things. So, yeah, and then at the Davis Library, we just decided we felt we needed one. And I was kind of like pulling teeth there though, I have to say, we had to, because people didn't know, they didn't wanna make a commitment. And, and maybe I was less experienced than two and I wasn't really sure what I was asking them for either at the time. But we got them together and then we quickly got our five oh one C three status, all like organized and, and within, you know, like six months or something. So it was a little arduous for them in the beginning, but then it was good.
And that's where we kind of got tripped up too. We had some people who were involved and then had to step back. And we were, you know, kind of starting the paperwork and didn't get there. Kind of waiting for the staff just to stabilize a little bit and then we were hoping, you know, once we have a director, we can pick that back up.
Yeah, great. That's good to know.
We'd be excited to have the director on our side from that background.
For sure, yeah. I can't imagine why you wouldn't be. Anyway.
And I remember hearing that quote in library school too, that you weren't supposed to have a patron.
Oh, yeah. I was like, you don't live in the real world. Please.
Sure. We're having difficulties right now with space.
Yeah.
And it had been brought to our attention by another candidate that perhaps the system that we use as a core collection is inappropriate for a library of our size. And also that we need to increase our circulation, because if you have more books off the shelf, you don't have a space issue. So I just wanted to hear your thoughts on those issues.
Well, I haven't looked at your core collection, so I'm not really sure I can comment on that. I didn't like look at that real closely when I was over there.
Basically, I think what was brought up was that we didn't need a core collection because of our size, that that perhaps wasn't appropriate for us.
It depends on do, does the, it all depends on what your people in town want and use, right? You don't really wanna have a bunch of stuff on your shelves that never circulates. Because you can, I mean, you guys belong to a great consortium. So if you need, you know, some obscure book or not even that obscure, but you know, something, a popular author, five, six years old, and hasn't circulated in three years, well, you might consider getting rid of it. And, and if somebody, there's a call for it, you just borrow it, right? Some libraries also have special collections, so like there's a library in New Hampshire that has a really great mystery collection. So they actually keep a whole bunch of stuff that nobody else would really keep. But if you need a mystery book and nobody else has it, they have it for sure. So there's also like libraries that might specialize in little collections like that. But in terms of having, I mean, we, I mean, that is the problem that little libraries face. You have to deal with the space you have and the budgets that you have, which aren't huge. And, but most people want a circulating library. I don't know, that's a broad statement, but it depends on who your patrons are. If you have a lot of students coming in, doing research, then you need to have books that, you know, current books, current titles, that are serving their specific subject area interests, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm not sure.
Okay. And as far as increasing circulation, any thoughts on that?
Well, the way to do, I think the way to do that is to make sure you have the books people want. And usually, I mean, people listen to the radio, they, you know, they hear about stuff all the time. And if you have it when they get there, so you need to always be like a step ahead. And that has to do with how you manage ordering your books. You know, what vendors you use, if you can preorder, you know, and you get all that ahead of time, planned out ahead of time. So that when the book comes out, it's on your shelf. And even two books, if it's gonna be a really popular book, you buy two copies if you can, you know. Or, you know, if it continues to be popular and it comes out in paperback, then you buy a paper cap, paperback to go along with your hardback, your hardcover. Because really, it's all about being there when they want it, you know?
The thing that certainly we've been seeing a focus on more recently is getting more staff input so that we discovered that there were some things that were, that were just happening that hadn't really been reviewed. And so, you know, they'd come up with the statistics and so we were able to say, you know, let's not do this anymore. It was the, the play.
Playaways.
Oh, playaways, right.
And it was finally determined that that was being, money being spent that wasn't getting enough used. So I think that really is a, an area that we need to keep looking at is what else,
Right.
you know, what else are we doing that we maybe shouldn't be doing?
Right. But on the other hand, there's, playaways are always like, you know, being discussed. Should we have them or not? They're really expensive, but they're kind of indestructible, which is a good thing. But then there's the battery issue. But if you promote the playaways, they get used. Because kids like that little thing that's all theirs and, you know, especially younger kids who don't have digital, their own personal digital device. So playaways for younger kids can sometimes be good.
I think we had two, two or three people that were using, was that? So that's when we got, okay, we can get that still, but we don't. But, but I think that we need to at some point start the focus on, you know, what else is not getting the readership or circulation.
Stats and, you know, which you should be able to generate all those reports. And you do it, you know, if you can do a longitudinal or, you know, at least a few years, then you get an idea of what are people, you know, reading? What are they, and, but also you just ask them. And if they say, are you gonna get such and such, or do you have it and you don't have it, we'll get it.
Within the budget.
Well, right. But you always have to like sort of, I mean, I always think that you need to just keep, like I'm not the kind of person who goes and buys all the books at one time or anything, so you, and you have to be able to really meet what the patrons need. You know, like I've almost never told a child that I can't get a book for them. And like, if I have to buy it, I just buy it. I don't know. And there's always gotta be some funding, some, some book money somewhere. So that said, though, it's also always better to, I think it's better to limit your vendors. So you're not buying, like different people aren't buying books from all over the place. That's unmanageable. I mean, just like anything else, I mean, a collection development is a plan. You figure it, you know, you plan it. And like if you have an elderly community who maybe you need, like you could look at your health books and maybe they need to be updated. I mean, that's the other thing, nonfiction books need to be updated pretty quickly. And that's the great thing about having digital resources, non, you know, nonfiction or, you know, research resources, cause they're constantly updated, right? But there's still gonna be people that want books, which is good.
So any questions? I'm sorry, I know I came in late, so if you've already answered these, I'm sorry. A couple of things. One, I noticed that you've had, you were a director and then you had specialties. So what makes you want to go back to being an overall director, which it seems in our case anyway, is largely managerial? I guess that's my first question.
Yeah. So, well, I was explaining this a little bit, that I was, I sort of volunteered to be, to clean out this little library. And then I ended up being the director of it, cause they didn't have anybody and they were, everybody just kind of got involved. And I just was loving it and spent all my waking moments there. And so, and then I decided to go to graduate school to get my masters in library science. So, and then I wanted to experience in other libraries. So I wanted to have like a full kind of library experience, cause that had been my only, I mean, besides working sometimes in school libraries when I was in college. That was my only library experience was being the director of this little library. So I needed to, I wanted to work under other experienced directors and, and, you know, have different positions within the library so I could really understand libraries better. But I went to Simmons with the idea of being a library director. So I went and I took management courses and things like that to help me with the, because I knew I wanted to be a director.
Why, why do you wanna come to Groveland? Have you already been asked all like seventeen times?
She wasn't here. That's okay. No, it's okay.
As you know, this has been a very long process.
Yeah. So I currently live in New Hampshire in a very rural kind of mountainous area. I used to live in Cambridge and in Watertown. So I lived in the Boston area for about twenty years or something, moved to New Hampshire, cause I was tired of living in the suburbs. And I love the country. I love the fresh air and like the, you know, I just like the nature. But it's too isolated for me, so I need, you know, culture.
You needed the hub of Groveland.
Well, no, so this is the thing. I don't wanna go back to Cambridge or Watertown or, I don't want that kind of intensity. What I just really want is a nice community with nature and, you know, where I can make a difference, I feel like. Because when I lived in Watertown, I lived there longer than Cambridge. And, you know, I wasn't involved in town politics or really anything that happened in the town. I just kind of lived there. And so when I moved to New Hampshire, it was like this little town and you go to town meeting and, you know, you go to the dump and you find out everything that happens in town, right? So, and then, you know, I got involved and I really liked it. It felt really good. And it was just too small for me. And I, and it's small, it's under a thousand people, the town I live in. So, you know, Groveland is, you know.
A metropolis.
But you know, it's in proximity, right? Of other, other things. And also, like I was saying, it would be nice to live near the coast. Because we used, when we lived in Boston, we used to go to the coast all the time. We'd drive up here pretty much. And where I live now, it's like this big, long drive and we never go to the coast anymore. So it'd be nice to be able to, cause which is one of the reasons I moved to Boston, was to be closer to the ocean.
And in the winter in some locations, you could be really close around here.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, my husband wanted to come with me tonight. He was gonna go to the beach and see all the snow on the beach. He didn't get home in time. I said, I have to go, I'm sorry.
I love your whole resume. I love everything about it. So varied and interesting. But the best part of it is, over three years through town meeting votes, Amy triples the library budget. And she increased the library patronage by over three hundred percent. Excellent.
Yeah, because it just, people liked what was going on and they were supportive.
And they will be supportive of all working.
Yeah. I mean, you have to, that's why I said, like every little library is really, it's, it's special to the town, right? So whatever you provide in your library, it's not gonna be the same as the town next door, right? Cause you have a different population. People have different interests or whatever, so. And part of that is just getting to know, I mean, there's a big learning curve, really, except for that you already know. And you have a lot of support, your trustees. And like having some direction on, on where you wanna go or where you think that your public really wants you to go.
Any other questions from anybody? I hope you still have time to hit the hotspots in Groveland before you make the house.
The diner's closed.
Yeah. But do you have a diner in?
Very nice diner.
Yeah. But the grocery store is not far away. I have to drive twenty-five minutes to a grocery store.
But, but not in town, unfortunately. It's just over the bridge.
Just over the bridge. Plus that bridge is really cool. I like that bridge.
Is it new?
Yeah. It's very like
Brand new, everything.
That's true. It's like strikingly modern, that bridge. The lights and everything, I mean, it's really like sort of space age. You what? Oh, yeah, before it was like you had to hold your breath.
I'd have my window ready to roll down. It was something ridiculous, like I forget what the numbers were, but it was pretty bad.
Oh, okay.
I think your resume is very impressive and.
Me too. Thanks. I've worked hard all my life to do it.
But you just, it's just that you're so well-rounded. There's just so many areas that, that you seem just well-rounded in.
Yeah, and I'm pretty comfortable with.
A handy woman, it's almost like, you know.
Yes, it's actually, my father used to always, you know, he'd say I'm a jack of all trades, I'm a expert at none.
Master of none, jack of all trades.
Right, that's exactly it.
That's right.
So I mean, I admittedly, I'm not a master of anything, really. I, but I, you know.
Kind of what I wanted to science.
Well, that's true. Write your question down, Laura. I can hear you, sure.
We were asking what you feel your strengths are. What would be something that you feel you could work on or that you would plan to work on? That this is something, I don't wanna say weakness, but
Yeah, no.
we all feel that?
It's a good question. So. So I like to sort of look at it from.
No, it's a grow, where, where's your area?
It's a really good question, yeah, that you'd like to grow in. I feel like I need to be more patient with my coworkers, probably. I mean, I have really high standards, like I want things to be, and I'll like work like all night long, because I'm just kind of nutty like that. And I have to understand that other people aren't gonna do that and that, that that's okay, you know? Sometimes I have, you know, I have too high of expectations, unrealistic expectations sometimes. But I've been really conscious of that and working on that. So I know that's like something I need to do. Like I need to just take a breath and say it. Well, you know, just because I will do this doesn't mean it's the right thing to do or it's better or, you know? Anyway.
You're consistent with your answer. That's the same answer you gave us last week.
Yeah, well, it is. It's something I really think about a lot. I, and I think maybe it's, you know, it comes, maybe it's been highlighted more because of working in schools. I have really, I don't know, I, I didn't work in schools before and so I expected a lot of leadership from the teachers in the schools. And I find that I, I just, some teachers I don't think, think of themselves as professionals and others do, you know? And so I find that I have a little less patience with the people who don't view themselves as professionals. Which I view myself as a professional and everybody I work with as a professional and, I don't know. I have that kind of expectation. But it has to be tempered sometimes.
And how do you react if people say, you know, if, if your co, if the people that are working with you can say, that's kind, you know, you're kind of pushing a little hard on that one.
That's okay. I want them to say that. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. It's good.
It's not an easy thing to do.
I'm a puncher, not a slapper. I just want that established.
All right.
But that's hard. I mean, there's a lot of people that can't do that kind of thing.
But if you can do it with a smile, you see, then that's the thing. It makes all the difference. Learned that too from working with little kids. If you discipline them and you smile, then they're like, oh, it's okay. You know, like they're not terrified. And then they'll do what you want them to do. Yeah, see, that's right. Right, and that's why, that's why I think having meetings, you know, weekly, just even just quick things, right, is good. Because then you just sort of make sure you're all thinking the same thing. Because that's where, you know, when you're in the middle of doing something and then somebody else is like going the other direction and you're like, wait a minute, why are you doing that? And, you know. And, you know, and then there's confusion, anyway.
If you're selected, are you planning to move down here or commute?
But, oh, yeah, it's about an hour and forty minutes away. So, um, yeah, no, and that's the whole idea is I wanna move down here.
So from a timeframe perspective.
That's the tricky part. So.
Would you be looking to rent in the area?
Yes, I would have to rent.
And then figure out?
Cause I own a house now, so I can't, you know, and it's a pretty unique house. Probably would have a hard time selling it. Um, it's in a beautiful location, but the house itself is kinda funky. And like I said, it's out in the middle of nowhere, so it's not a lot of people that maybe would like that, I'm not sure. But at any rate, that is a whole other story, but yeah, so no, I would rent, uh, try to find an apartment or something nearby where, and sort of get, you know, the lay of the land and everything before I would, um, buy anything, that's for sure. I don't know, I've been trying to think about like, how do you, you know, do that?
How do you do that, convince your husband to come down?
Actually, he's working in Portsmouth right now.
He's ready.
So, um.
It said you had a child.
Yes, I have a child.
So, do you have a school consideration as well?
Yeah, I do have a school. He's just gonna have to bend. He's a pretty adaptable kid, so he's thirteen, he's on the cusp of being like really, you know, thinking his, you know, whatever, he can be pretty stubborn, but.
So would you be, are you gonna need to wait on a school year or how does that all?
Well, I don't know, I was thinking about that, because if, I mean, I never had to change schools when I was a kid, I went to the same school, I lived in the same house. My husband, on the other hand, went to like a million schools and moved all over the world. So I'm more anxious about it than my husband is. But on the other hand, if we moved, even if we had to take him out of school and move him to a new school, then at least he'd maybe hopefully make some friends to have something to do in the summer. If we waited till summer, then he'd be here and he wouldn't have any kind of activity or anything to do where he would meet friends, so. As hard as it might.
Volunteer at the library, come on.
My son is a library connoisseur and it would be okay with him if he never had to go to another one. He's at that age now, he's like, no, my God, I wanna go to the library. No, actually, he's a great reader though, he will just like go and like find a little corner and just read, but. Anyway. He'll have to adjust, that's all I can say. And he will. Yeah, like he knows I'm here tonight, I said I was just like going to sort of check it out. He was like, didn't you go there last week?
I like driving for almost two hours after a snowstorm.
But, you know, just can't shut the door, you know, like I just have to go check it out again, so. I'm trying to like, I don't wanna really get him too involved until it's something that I feel really like it's the right thing. Cause I don't wanna give him that kind of like anxiety about where we might be going or not or whatever. He's in seventh. Yeah, my guy's twelve, so, yeah. He's an old seventh grader, so, he wasn't ready for kindergarten, so. They said maybe he should go back to preschool, I was like, well.
You don't, at that age anyway.
I know, it's very hard.
Doesn't matter what you do.
That's true. I, I'm like so nice to him and then he tells me that he had a terrible day and I was mean to him all day, I'm like, how can you even like think that? But, anyway.
So do you have questions for us?
Well, I, you know. Well, I do have questions, I have questions about, um, well, I know you had your five-year plan and I guess I'm wondering how, um, you feel about that plan? Like, did you accomplish what you set out to accomplish, is there, what were the hard parts of that or, I don't know?
The hardest part, I'm sorry. I think the hardest part was, our plan was hoping for a new library or an addition to the library. And that's something that's gonna have to roll over into the next. Strategic plan, uh, there's some, many things that we accomplished and many things that will be coming with us into the next plan. We're starting a big preservation, um, we did receive a grant, a forty-two-hundred dollars, an LSTA grant. For a startup of preservation, because we have a lot of historical documents. And we're presenting that tomorrow night to Community Preservation Committee. And, uh, asking for funding from them to carry, carry forth, I can show you, uh, what we presented. And some of the plans, so when you actually looked through the library on your tour, you can maybe envision some of the, what we're looking for. So that's a big project going forward. It won't happen overnight if we, uh, are granted the funding, uh, from Community Preservation. It would have to be approved at town meeting, to go through the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, be approved at town meeting and then, uh, the funds would be available if it's approved on July first.
So this is to specifically to, um, uh, take care of historical documents and things, right?
It was, it was the, start, starting, it was part of the five-year plan.
So. Do you have a historic, um, uh, historical society with a building?
But they don't have a building that's open nor. That you can actually access.
So the library serves that purpose?
The library is looking to serve that purpose.
Although the Historical Society does have, the building that they were in is now being rented out. And so they're in a different building and I think that it's, that it's in the soon-to-be phase, where they're gonna be opening.
Yeah, a planning stage.
So they wanna have a more active Historical Society with a collection, yeah. Right, because that's, that's another.
I think that eventually we would be like one-stop shopping, we have what the Historical Society does and what the town has. So rather than go eighty-seven different places, you'd come to the library.
Right, that's what we were talking about a little earlier too, about like why have all these different things? Except for some Historical Societies have vehicles and things like that, so we couldn't really put those.
We don't have a, a material cultural collection, we only have an archival collection. But if we have everything in one place, there's no need to go there.
And have you thought about digitizing it?
Yes.
Uh-huh, okay, and so would some of these funds maybe be used for that, for digitization?
Not initially. It would be mostly used for housing, yeah, housing and preservation of what we have.
And is this where the addition to the library then comes in as well? With the idea of an addition to the library?
Right now, it's utilizing the space we have, the plan is to utilize the space that we have. When you went into the back hall, did they take you on tour of the back hall?
Maybe it might be the one spot we didn't go to.
I bet you didn't turn the light on, right? That's the area that we're really looking for, there's a lot more space there that's being utilized. With display cases in the library.
Right, yeah, great.
It's an ambitious project, but I think there's a lot of enthusiasm for it. And once, if we are funded by the Community Preservation, that opens us up for more federal and state grants.
Exactly, when you have matching funds. Yeah, good. So, so do you, I guess one of the other things I'm wondering is, is the library endowed in any way? Do you have trust funds or you have some kind of other, so you, you don't just solely rely on town funds?
I have a donation account, that's, we have a big book sale every year and we have people that, a woman that runs that loves it and she does it and that goes into the donation account. We have an annual appeal. And of course, the state aid.
Oh, yeah, right.
And then we have trust funds also. Some of them are specific as to what they can be used for and some of them are general.
Okay, yeah, good to know. Yeah, I don't know, I'm so, I'm kind of overwhelmed though, I know I have a million questions, but, um, so I guess, yeah, one of my, was, you know, funding is always, I think you asked me the other day, what I thought was one of the, uh, barriers to having a good library and it's funding is usually, because it keeps getting cut as well, so it's always something that would, you know, is there. Um, so doing different fundraising activities or having, you know, grants and then being able to raise enough funds to match, if you, you know, so, um, that's all, you seem to know all about that, which is good. So how, uh, involved is the, are the board of trustees then in, in like running, like, what do you see your role, I guess? And, and what about like policy, you guys create policy?
Policy-setting board. And we're a working board.
You're a working board, good.
So we do a lot of work for fundraising, we do a lot of work for filling in, volunteering.
And I think I can answer for everyone that we know, when we have a director in place, is we can all step back to where we were, are supposed to be and, you know. And go back to.
Right, right. And how are your policies, are they pretty well up to date or have you?
We're in the process of updating them, but there's been so much else on our plates right now.
But that actually is a process that we just recently started taking a page at a meeting and then you go through to see if it needs to be updated or not.
And I think many of our policies are online.
Are online, yeah, I did, I noticed that too, but, um, I was just sort of wondering, in your mind, do you review them? Like, you have like a, you rotate annually or semi-annually or whatever, yeah, different things.
But we take the advice of the director also in policy setting.
Yeah, with the reviewing policy and, um, yeah, I don't know, I don't really have any other big questions right now.
You know, during this whole process, obviously, all of us have had to come in to help in whatever areas and I think it's important that you know that we're there to be a help, but that we also want you to be able to, to do what you need to be able to do.
Well, that's like, what more could you ask for actually, it's a supportive board. Who really cares about the, you know, I mean, you all are obviously really invested in the library because you spend time there, you've stepped up to the plate when you needed to, so.
Lauren is currently doing the children's program. But that's a crucial piece right now that we didn't have, so, you know, everybody has stepped up. I'm doing, um, payroll and vouchers right now and trying to keep up, did the budget request and.
So you handle the, you handle that independently of the town then?
Uh, no, we, we do our part and then send it to the town and then they process from there. But just still trying to go through the records and figuring out, we just had to provide our two thousand sixteen budget.
I was gonna ask you, where are you?
So that has been provided, um, and, you know, that's my first time doing that. Whether they're gonna have questions or there's things that need to be done, but we're all kinda taking whatever role that we can take or that we have our strength in. To kinda just keep things going until we can get that.
All the way down to checking out books and shelving books, we really have been, I can't wait to step back.
You're waiting for your vacation. Well, I mean, everybody has their life and that wasn't really what you were planning on doing, I guess, so.
But they, but we did, and I think that's the point, is that we did, you know, we're, we're here to support and, and certainly help how we can.
And that's another thing, I don't know if it's been, um, brought up, but they do have a very active volunteer, um, group in the library, the people that come in on a weekly basis, um, shel, you know, shelving, doing, I don't know, cutting out.
Ask Katie, she's one of the kids.
There's probably a good active, active. Dependable fifteen.
Fifteen volunteers? Yeah, great.
That's Carlos' nose, he's got two kids that do.
All, all the mine does, now we have, now we have one.
So I guess another thing is, is do you have a technology plan or do you have, you know, how do you, do you have a?
Well, it's part of the five-year plan too, technology was a piece in that. That's why we have to, we do it again this year.
So are you pretty satisfied like where you ended up or?
No, I think we're.
But we're still missing.
We're trying to work on that piece.
And so what do you find, I mean, are people in your community really ready for that or are you, I mean, you know, I was, um, talking to somebody the other day and with the broadband initiative, then, you know, some little libraries end up with like more bandwidth and they even know what to do with, right? And because they don't have the equipment inside to actually make use of the bandwidth. So, you know, that's something that developing programs like that for the community. I'm also like really big into digital literacy and things like that, I've been working with the kids, you know, um, digital citizenship. So, and I think that that's really important, I think I talked about that at the other meeting, about, you know, working with parents and, and, because parents, their kids are just off doing stuff and the parents feel insecure about they don't know what their kids are doing or how to, you know, manage it or whatever, and so doing programming like that for whole families, um, around digital literacy and citizenship would be a great thing to do with the public library, anyway.
Yeah, you can cover things like Open DNS and how you can make sure that they can surf the web, but it's more, a little safer than.
Yep, exactly. Yeah, and do you guys have filters on your computers? Do you have Open DNS or?
I don't think so. I think that's, we can't or something like that?
You can, yeah, you're not supposed to. The funds go out the door when you do that, so. But that's why, especially with children's computers, then you just make sure that they're like in line of sight so you can always see what's going on with kids on computers, so. Anyway, yeah. I don't know, if I have any other questions right now.
Thank you, I have to just say, I mean, just, that's just so exciting to hear, I mean, just having that, you're having that knowledge, the technology piece of things, I think it's just, as a parent of three, I just can't help but feel like, you know, it, it, it's important and to have that.
It is really important.
As part of the library and, uh, you know, the possibility of having that, you know?
Yeah, and also teaching kids about, you know, I mean, they have computers in schools and I don't know in your schools how, much access and training the students really get at the different age levels, but really being able to teach students how to create, like share their knowledge because everything is digital and pictures and, you know, so teaching them to have a voice, like allowing them to have a voice is something that, you know, without the internet and, you know, before we had public access TV, um, we never, people rarely never had a voice, you know, so. Teaching them how to have a responsible, thoughtful voice, you know, and giving those, those tools and that kind of guidance, I think is really something I feel pretty strongly about.
Well, thank you, Amy, we really appreciate that you.
Yes, thank you.
Drove down tonight.
It was fine, I sort of figured it would be fine, but, yeah, they kept saying you had so much snow down here. Usually we get a lot of snow, cause I'm up in elevation and it wasn't even that incredible, so you guys got, looks like you got much. Looks nice, okay, well.
We're just gonna pause for a moment.
Yes, this is the library copy, and I'm gonna leave this here.
And then we will come back and reconvene and. A quick moment, yep.
Nice to meet you, thank you for coming. Nice to meet you, yeah.